Please, for roll call, all members are present with the exception of Mike Edman. Please join me for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the British and just as law.
Thank you. You have your minutes before me. If anyone has had the opportunity to read them, I entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four school board meeting.
Thank you. Mari, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion by Mari, second by Jen. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. We have a green agenda. Any other, or I entertain a motion to approve it.
I'll move to approve the agenda as offered.
Thank you. Motion by Dan, second by Mari. Any further discussion or changes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. For this evening's celebrations and school community reports, we have Minnesota Motor Bus, Dave Hearn here. No?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
That's the first time here, so I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're good.
That's okay. You can come right up here to the podium so everyone can hear you well.
As far as a report for you, it all gets included at our year-end billing that we send to the school. More than anything, I wanted you guys to be able to put a face with Minnesota Motor Bus, and that would be me. I'm Dave Hearn. I'm the manager at the location here in Fairmont. The owners are out of Marshall, Minnesota, Southwest Coaches. And just let you know, this is my second full year sitting in the seat at Minnesota Motor Bus. There's been quite a few changes made with our approach to busing. It's refreshing for me to be able to, you know, Andy's got an open door policy. You know, I can see Chad here. You know, Chad and I talk quite a bit on a weekly basis. Matt Mahoney, the A.D., him and I talk daily with scheduling. And, you know, I think, you know, Chad, go on ahead and chime in if you'd like. I think we have a good working relationship, and I think, I think it's been, it's been very good on your side and on our side. And I guess I just want to offer up, is there any questions from the board for Minnesota Motor Bus?
I'd just like to thank you. I know that around the country, there's, it's hard to get bus drivers and to staff those positions. And getting our children, our students to and from not only school but all their activities is quite a challenge, especially in such a large geographical district. And we really do appreciate your efforts and, and those of your drivers.
Yep, thank you. Yeah, we, you know, and some of you, I mean, have probably seen some what I would call foreign buses coming through, picking up for activities. You know, we, we've had a lot of phone conversations with South Central Conference bus operators. We've all started, you know, an email thread. So we can up, offer up our busing to them. They can offer up their busing to us on days they're not busy or days we're not busy. So, you know, we've leaned on Wasika Lake Crystal. We've helped out both of those school districts. We've helped out Medelia. Truman helps us out. We help them out. It's just kind of a give and take type deal because we're all in the same boat. So, we have taken some steps. I did hire another full-time person that is going to be getting his bus license this summer to have another full-time person on staff to be able to help out for activities and things like that. So, and we are working through some scheduling for next year, looking at trimming down some routes, maybe having some buses empty by the time they hit the high school to be able to haul activities more readily. So, it's something that evolves every, I mean, it's just, it's a revolving deal every year. You try to think of new and different ways to, to make things better. And sometimes they work, sometimes they don't. So, we just do our, do the best we can. So.
So, we know as, as technology advances and that, is there a program or anything that we can do more centralized, like, like you mentioned already, you've already started it by emailing that. But is there a scheduling thing that we could use or that's in the forecast maybe of maybe getting that job done a little bit easier of the scheduling and stuff, especially of fine arts activities or the sports activities and that to get our kids, but not necessarily just our kids, but other kids in other districts. But you know what I'm saying? You know, there's, I, I know there's gotta be because you can't tell me Minneapolis-St. Paul city buses don't have some kind of a program or something. So, you know, I mean, there's gotta be something available and, and, you know, so that maybe that could be cost savings for some of these districts, these smaller ones, and even for our, you know, larger district as, maybe as well. But, I mean, or is, you know, has that been something that's thought about or talked about?
It's been toyed with. I mean, it's, you know, with the way using, you know, the sports scheduling, for instance. I mean, it's, it's done, correct me if I'm wrong, Andy, you know, talking with Matt, you know, one school schedules this sport, another school schedules this sport, another school schedules this sport. And so, sometimes it just doesn't, you know, they're not looking at the both sides of the coin sometimes and what else is being scheduled during that time. And that's what us as operators getting together, getting in talk, contact with our A.D.s and saying, hey, you know, let's, let's look at this in a little, you know, if, if we got a group going to Wasika, why is Wasika coming to us? Well, I'd rather put two boats, two buses on the road, send them to Wasika for the day instead of having them cross on the interstate.
Sure.
It's just, you know, little, little things like that.
I can't tell you the times that I'm going to Mankato or other cities and that, and I see one of our buses one way. And then when I'm coming home, I maybe meet, you know, the opposing team bus or, you know, even a neighboring school district's bus going the other way. And so, yeah, so, but, I mean, is, you know, just to be open and to, you know, recognize that maybe that is a possibility and maybe it's, it goes before the, the athletic events and that are even scheduled that we are looking for. So, you know, if you've got this great, you know, contact and, and, you know, working relationship, you know, maybe we start planning for, you know, the spring sports already now, or we, you know, plan fall before, or it's probably late, too late for fall because I know schedules, calendars are out. But, but, you know, but what I'm saying is that maybe it's the next, next fall then or something. So.
We're, we're going to be meeting together as a group here by the end of June, all the, all the operators. And, and it's, you know, kind of a get to know you type of thing. Get all of our school schedules that we have available on the, on the table. Let everybody take a look at them, see if there's a place we can help out, they can help out, do things like that. So, I mean, it's, I, I'm gonna tell you this right now, I would not be in an athletic, I would not want to be in an athletic director's shoes trying to schedule, I mean, it's just a logistical nightmare, trying to get all the sports scheduled. And they do a great job. Matt does a great job. Him and I, like I said, we talk daily through the school year trying to, you know, get things to fit, get things, you know, move this, move that, do what we have to do to, to get things rolling. So, and I, you know, I think we had to, this year, when I look back at my records, we, I think we had to bump up, I think, two activities to get, to get the job done, to get back by route. So, you know, really, that compared to previous years, I've looked back and there's been some times where it's been fifteen, sixteen times where we've had to move schedules.
You know, and that's important for the public to know.
Yeah.
Because what we hear as board members is the adverse, that, that it happens more than what we know, what we realize. And so, I'm glad to hear that. And I'm glad the public is, is here to hear that as well.
Yeah.
Because it is important. But like I said, it's also important for them to realize that you just don't put a bus on the road and away you go. You know, I mean, do you have an actual, you know, plan of the day for the week, for the month?
Yeah.
As it goes. But I do appreciate you sharing that information.
Yeah. And, you know, Andy's got my phone number. I, I visited with Jen in her driveway. So, she has my phone number. I mean, by all means, you know, if there's ever any questions or any concerns brought up to you as a board, feel free to contact me. Please, I would, I would much rather you contact me and, and I can come to a board meeting, visit with you, you know, explain to you what's going on. That, I, I would much rather, much rather have it that way. So.
If someone was interested in becoming a, a bus driver, what would be some things they want to know to get started?
Basically, last year, the, the year before last, they mandated entry level driver training. It's a three-month, three-month process that, especially if you don't, if you've never had a C D L before, you, you have to basically start at square one. And it's rough, I, I say three months, it's, it's roughly three months. Some it's longer, some it's right at three months. You do entry level driver training. I have found, and I had to clear it with the state, that we put brand-new drivers through the entry, entry level driver training first before they go take their C D L test, just because it gives them a good background to take the, the C D L. You have to acquire four, you have to acquire Class B C D L, air brakes endorsement, a passenger endorsement, and a school bus endorsement. And then you have to do a pre-trip test on the bus and do a driving test on the bus. And the driving test, they just changed this last year mandated. It's given by the federal motor carriers. It's no longer administered by the state. And that's a roughly between an hour and forty-five to two-hour, hour and forty-five minute to two-hour road test that the driver takes. So, it's a, it's a process. And if anybody's listening or I, I pay for that process. I know it's the price of doing business. You know, the time the person starts studying to the time they pass their test and they're on the road for me, I am going to pay them. I don't expect people to donate three months of their life to learn how to drive a school bus. So, I'm more than happy to work within the parameters that I have to make sure we reimburse people for getting their, their bus license. So.
That's very important for people to even know and understand as well. And I know that some of the changes, you know, can seem like, yeah, three months of a, of your summer, your time and that. But yet, you know, they are hauling students, children, you know, yes. And I know there is, you know, sometimes kids are kids. And it, it takes a lot to, to be able to focus and understand, but it's a big vehicle as well.
Yeah.
And, you know, anybody who has that availability or that interest, yes, we, we are very much interested for them to apply or, or even, you know, take some time and, and can they stop at Minnesota Motor Bus?
Yes, they can. Anytime.
And, you know, fill out an application or just talk to you and see what they can do.
More than happy.
Not that I'm looking for a job.
Yeah.
I won't touch the semi, so.
I just want to reiterate what Dave alluded to with our positive working relationship. You know, while Minnesota Motor Bus is its own business and a separate entity, it is one with Fairmont Area Schools. And, you know, that's indicative of our, you know, six P.M. Friday meetings when Dave or I call each other and say, hey, can we talk through this before the weekend? Or when we're on the phone at before five A.M. when the weather's approaching and, and figuring out which routes we're going to drive to assess the roads and communicating with the county. And, and just, it's been, it's been really, really good. You know, every, every August, we have a pre-school year planning meeting. This last year, you know, I applaud Dave and his group for, you know, being innovative in their approach to our busing routes, to reduce some stops, to create efficiencies in the process. You know, he took a year to learn what was in place and then, you know, inserted some innovations to improve those processes. And it's exciting to hear that you're looking even increasing those efficiencies as well, moving forward to, to provide the best product we can for our, for our kids and, and getting them safely, whether it's to school or their events. So, look forward to continuing to work together moving forward.
So do I.
And I believe Jessica just got some updated rates that will be on a future board agenda to, to solidify that for, for the next few years. So.
Solidify your conversations?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So, thank you for the partnership.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we have Mr. Chad Buskey, the M.A.S.S.P. Star of Innovation Award.
Yes. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Superintendent Tredo, Madam Chair. Here to share with you an award that the high school had received that through Minnesota Association of Secondary Principals I applied for and we received. And that was for our HVAC progression. So, if you guys want to pass that through. Basically, this award, and I think helps to encapsulate part of our mission statement of beating, being a, leading an innovative school district. And some of our programming reflects that. As I was looking as to which program to actually apply for the grant, a couple came to mind. The house that we're working on with Habitat for Humanity is very innovative. And as far as when we were moving that school, that house into the school, I believe we were the only school in the nation doing it that day, which was cool. We have our auto repair through county social services. So, we have partnered with the county to help fix cars to get people back to work. Basically, they pay for the parts, our, we do the labor, and we're able to help repair many cars. And we've had many come through this year. Another one would be our aviation program and drones, as one of the other award recipients showcased their drone program. And so, we have a lot of really cool programs, not to mention our student support, our Saturday School, our credit recovery model. We have a lot of really cool things, so it's hard to pick. When looking at the grant, it was, it had to be something that could be repeatable at another district and showed leadership from the administrative level. And so, I really thought this did a nice job of showcasing all of that, as it wasn't just a single person pushing this forward. It was a team of administrators over several years that got this accomplished. And so, it started with the approval of the vocational building being approved by the voters and all the work that went into that. Then it came to the planning. And when we started looking at the plans, we realized the proposed space for HVAC was late, so see, it's degree level work. And so, we bounced that idea off of seventeen different tech schools to get their feedback. And what we really need to focus on to give our kids a leg up entering a program for HVAC. And so, after doing all that homework, we started partnering with South Central to tour their facilities, what, what, how do they run it? Where do they get their equipment? That led to us having conversations with local partners. And if you walk into our HVAC lab right now, you'll see a lot of equipment that's been donated by local HVAC providers, specifically Crest Refrigeration has provided a lot of hardware and a lot of support when looking at the curriculum that we put together in scope and state, sequence. And to say like, this has not been done in a high school is an understatement, as when I was looking for curriculum to provide like a, a scope and sequence for our programming, the only other high school with an onsite HVAC program that I could find was a magnet school in Pennsylvania. And so, this was something that, as we lay it out and now able to share with other schools, we're hopeful that other kids are able to experience HVAC, as it's been a very valuable program for students. They get metalworking, they get soldering, they get electrical practice. All the blueprint reading has really been a powerful piece. And then we're also providing some initial training and, and experience for any student who might want to go into installing and then pursue an HVAC license later on. So, any questions for me?
Well, there's a little bit more to it. Share with the board what's coming up here in a couple of weeks in June at the M.A.S.S.P. Summer Conference.
Right. So, everyone that wins the Star of Innovation has to, well, doesn't have to. Are asked to, are asked to present at the Minnesota Leadership Conference up in Brainerd. And so I'll be presenting on behalf of the school, five, ten-minute presentation on the program and giving basically our scope and sequence, our resources, so that other schools may be able to duplicate what we've done here as well. So, yeah, it's, it's a nice opportunity to be able to share, having sat on the board for the Star of Innovation, I've seen a lot of other programs. Like a attendance recovery was a winner this year. A virtual help desk for homework run by students is another one that a school district's doing. So it's always good to like, sit on those boards, or in this case, I couldn't because we had put forth a, a application. But just to kind of think about outside the box and how we can adapt programs here at Fairmont to really give the kids the support they need in an ever-changing world. And so I, I think, you know, for all the work that went into the HVAC program and all of our other innovative programs, I really think it's a great example of our commitment to constantly meeting the needs of kids as we move forward.
I think you're right. It is a, you know, great way that we're meeting our kids' needs, but, you know, we have to, I just wanted to shout out to those, you, and you mentioned those who are very integral as, as partners as to start it, you know, the HVAC program and that. So, you know, but it, it doesn't stop there. I mean, we've had other programs in the, in the trades in that we've had support from our community. If it wasn't for the community that Fairmont has and the support that we have for our schools, you know, we wouldn't have what we have. But it, I just, just want to thank everyone, and I can't mention everyone because I'll miss somebody, but I do appreciate our community for the great support. I mean, I can remember when we went for the referendum to build the building, and we had just tremendous support from our community. And so it is very important, but I do want to just mention those, just businesses that were that part of that planning phase to help and to, you know, just support us.
Right, I, I think too, it's, it's important to highlight that not only does the community support the school, but the school is also to provide something back to the community. You know, my, my uncle's car is supposed to be getting fixed in the auto shop. It was this barn find and it's, the work keeps getting put off because of the need to repair cars to get people back to work, you know? So that's, that's really cool to see. The housing that we're going to be able to provide, that house is going to be set onsite somewhere in Fairmont. The welding booths, we're now up to twenty-two welding booths because of the continued support of local businesses. And, and that's HVAC, but we also have other programs, our egg, our egg partnerships and our egg advisory and their partner, opportunities that we're able to provide our students with the plot of land that we're able to go out, do soil testing and planting there and, and how we're going to refine that moving forward. But also, you know, even in our cores and our, our literature field trip for Midwest Lit is a good example of going out and seeing the local opportunities that we have that maybe students aren't aware of by, one, the support of the school and the school board, but also of our public.
As you were going through the very beginning of your presentation about all of these options that you were trying to decide which one to present, I thought that was quite remarkable that our school does have, especially in a community this size, so many options available to our students. And it is because of our community, and the goal is to give back to the community, whether it's in future employment or, or the cars that our community needs, or the homes, just, I think it's a great partnership. And I do want to thank the community for their support and also the leadership in our schools and the teachers and administration and, and students who bring ideas or things that they want to learn or are interested in. It's, it's, to me, is a wonderful partnership between so many entities that work so well together. So thank you, and thank you for applying for this, for our school. It's wonderful, it's a wonderful opportunity for Fairmont to be recognized and put on the map as the innovator that I think it is in this area.
Yeah, so next year, the goal is to reach gold status.
Awesome.
There you go.
We got silver this year, next year.
Set those goals high.
There were five gold this year, eleven silver, and five bronze, so twenty-one schools in the state recognize, so.
That's really neat. Thank you very much, Mr. Buskey.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chad.
All right, we now have our superintendents' report and calendar.
All right, thanks, Nicole. As usual, the start of the report highlights where we ended the year with our student enrollment. On the last day of school, we had one thousand six hundred ninety-one students in attendance, and that is down approximately twenty, it looks like twenty, oh, how many kids from last year?
Thirty-nine.
I didn't do thirty-nine kids from the end of last year. Thanks, Julie. So that is a slight decrease, but all in all, we had relative stable enrollment throughout the year with a range of twenty-four students, with our highest being one thousand seven hundred thirteen students in October, and our lowest enrollment in May at one thousand six hundred eighty-nine. So we'll continue to monitor that. I know there may be some comments from our work session when we looked at our overall demographics to come later in the meeting. Last week, I met with Director of Buildings and Grounds Tyler Garrison to look at where we're at with our current projects. They finished up some lighting replacement on the canopy at the gymnasium entrance. Still some things they're working through in the CTE building. If you drive down Johnson Street, you see a lot of work being done on tree projects as well as some updated fencing around our outdoor spaces. The gymnasium prog, project, the day after graduation, they were already in there clearing the walls and beginning cleaning for that to be painted first before the floor is then sanded down and, and resurfaced for the upcoming year. Tyler's beginning work on the tennis court replacement planning, which is not happening this summer, but will happen in the future. One of the things he did as a part of that is he met with staff from the city of Fairmont to look at any potential collaboration on future projects, potentially going out to bid together or doing some planning collaboratively to potentially look at some cost savings there by partnering with the city. So great job of him reaching out with that community connection. The East Playground here at the elementary school, that will be torn out coming up here and beginning that replacement project, as well as the long list that continues on for summer projects that Tyler and his group do a phenomenal job with our buildings. Next, last Tuesday, we had our Region 2A Minnesota State High School League meeting. The board or executive committee there that I have the privilege to be a part of, this was an end-of-the-year organizational meeting. And one item I wanted to highlight is our facilities are cited as a desirable neutral site for postseason play due to the organization, the accessibility, and everything that goes along with, and just the quality of our facility. So we've informed the region that we are open and willing to host any postseason competition in any state high school league activity moving forward. So definitely some positive feedback there for our school district. End-of-year meeting and recognitions. To start last week, as our staff was here for a few days after our students, we conducted an all-staff meeting, provided some updates on the strategic plan, and really focused on celebrating our accomplishments of the school year. As part of that, we took time to recognize our staff members who have served Fairmont Area Schools for twenty-five years. Those individuals are Mary Abel, Patty Fitzgerald, Sarah Junkermeier, Brad Johnson, Todd Seagar, and Don Walertich. We were able to share a little bit about each of their histories with the district and different roles in which they have served. We also took a moment to celebrate and recognize two of our retirees. One was Deb DeBoer, who has served Fairmont Area Schools for thirty-three years as an academic support aide predominantly at the elementary. And then next, the final recognition was the retirement of Judy Kapiski as the Superintendent's Administrative Assistant. And this probably should have been up on the celebrations as well, but it's definitely a celebration. And I told Judy walking down here, I wasn't going to say anything. She actually brought it up that, you know, be her last walk down the hallway to a board meeting. But while I was waiting here to start, I did some quick math. So Judy has served our school district for thirty-six years in her role. She's worked with five superintendents in that time, which is a testament to her commitment. It's also a testament to our school district that we've had that level of consistency in the superintendency over that thirty-six-year period. When you add that up, Judy attended or was a part of approximately eight hundred school board meetings throughout her career. When you do the math of that in hours, that is approximately thirty-three full days of her life she has spent at school board meetings. Now, whether, whether she wanted me to bring that up or not, at approximately one hour per board meeting, you know, over that stretch is absolutely phenomenal commitment. And one of the things that I highlighted a week ago Monday was Judy, you know, our school district's tagline is "Inspired Learning for Life," and Judy has epitomized that as a lifelong learner. Over the last three years, she could have chosen a different path, but she chose to take on the, the challenge of training in a new superintendent with...
What, you think she's done?
Yeah, well, I don't, no, but she has wandered down to the elementary office to see how things operate there and potential of maybe helping out in different capacities. But just phenomenal, you know, commitment and dependability that Judy has demonstrated throughout her career. And you'll definitely be missed, Judy. It was great to have all two hundred-plus staff members a week ago Monday acknowledge her commitment to our district with a standing ovation, and that was more than, more than well-deserved. So I know we have a few minutes left of this board meeting, but thank you for all you've done in your years of service. And I don't think there's a more appropriate way to end this report than with a thank you to you, so thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
You're an integral part of our, being able to be board members as well, because you keep us, you know, online for our meetings and get us on schedules, and it's just amazing. And the stuff that you do that, you know, for us as well, just, and I, for the school districts, it's immensely a big, big job, but even us, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a tough job to arrange our schedules for us too, so thank you from the board.
And she's persistent, even, you know, with people who don't respond to emails very well.
She has a nice way of reminding you.
Well, thank you. We have our financial business now, donations, Dan?
Yes, we have a resolution, an appendix A in front of you, is provided for Minnesota State statutes. We have the offer of a donation of $100 from Brian and Jill Grensteiner for the designated purpose of CTE programming. I move that we accept this generous donation from the Grensteiners with thanks.
Thank you, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, Jen?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Chair votes, aye, Julie?
Aye.
Mari?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries, and thank you to the Grensteiners. Financial reports and bills, Jessica?
Yes, so you have quite a stack in front of you. We have the wire transfers from May ninth to June fifth. Everything's pretty much the same in there. You will notice the new one is direct payment up at the top of, or in parentheses, ACH. So we have now started paying vendors via ACH process rather than cutting check, and so that's gone well so far, and the, the direct deposit authorizations keep coming in. So if there's a business out there that we do business with and they would like to pay us via ACH, they just need to contact the business office and then we can get them rolling on that. But, so that's been good for the last couple of bill runs that we've used. Otherwise, the, on the May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four checks, or single checks, we just had replacement of a lawnmower that was budgeted operating capital plan. On the May twenty-eighth bills, there's a large payment to SHI International of eighty-one thousand two hundred. That's for our normal replacement schedule of Chromebooks for the high school and elementary. And then on the tonight's June eleventh listing, we have SHI International Corporation payment check number six nine nine eight four for seventy-five hundred dollars. Again, with, going through the new year, we have iPads that were being replaced, and so those are the covers for the iPads, not iPads quite yet, so a lot of preparation for the new year.
Well, they can't make an iPad the same way, so they have to, you know, there's, there's a, you know, a reason why they're doing them, but yeah, so you got to buy the iPad, oh, now that old covers don't fit, now we buy a new one.
Yes, yep, they're busy getting ready for the new school year, so I have that.
Any questions for Jessica?
If they're not, I will make a motion, binding my agenda, to, well, I don't see it listed today, but we're making a motion, is it there? Oh, it is. I was thinking those are both are budgeted. Okay, approve the wire transfers from May ninth, two thousand twenty-four, to June fifth, two thousand twenty-four, May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, single check, the May twenty-eighth, and June eleventh, two thousand twenty-four bills.
Thank you, we have a motion by Julie, second by Mari. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We are going to have Jessica present the revised and preliminary budget.
Yes.
Appendix B.
Yeah, so you should have the packet in front of you. We did go over this at the work session on May twenty-eighth, but we'll touch on it again. We'll start on page four with the enrollment. Historical enrollment on there, you see, we did have a dip this year of three point nine five percent, approximately over last year's numbers. We'll project a little bit higher for next year's enrollment at eighteen oh seven point eight. On page five, just goes over the pupil unit weights. And so anybody in grades seven through twelve, they generate one point two of the pupil formula versus anybody kindergarten or grades one through six are just one point oh. And so the school does receive seven thousand two hundred and eighty dollars for fiscal year twenty-five per pupil unit. And that is a two percent increase over last year's. The twenty-three, twenty-four revenues. Page six is the general revenues by source. And note, we do have a decrease in our revenues, and that is due to the loss of ESAR funding, the expiration here at the end of pretty much this school year, they will, we do have to have them obligated by September thirtieth. So we're trying, plan on getting those all spent here, and so we won't have as much next year. Do you have any questions on the revenues? Nope. All right, then we move on to the general fund expenses by program on page seven. As always, our elementary and secondary instruction do take up a significant portion of our budget. This year, it's forty-four point twelve percent. And again, with the expiration of those ESAR funds going away, we do have a projected decrease in our expenses of about five hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. Page eight just goes over to the general fund expenses by object code, so salaries, benefits, purchased services. Not too much fluctuation there between the percentages from year to year. Again, salary and wages and benefits do make up about sixty-eight percent, sixty-nine percent of our total budget. Page nine is on our food service fund. Last, the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we did get the legislature passed free meals for students. And so with that, it's more of a shift in having parents pay for it instead of getting in state and federal aid. There is a reduction in our twenty-four, twenty-five preliminary budget because of, again, federal dollars that we got for COVID that are going away. So that was about forty thousand dollars there. So, there was about $40,000 there. Page 10 just goes over the food service expenses again by the object code, so again, breaking it down between salary, benefits, supplies. Not very large changes there as we look towards reducing our fund balance the next couple of years to become in alignment with the state's requirements. Page 11 is on the community service fund, relatively stable as revenues. They do go down about $15,000, and that is due to, again, expiring ESAR funds. Then we do have a decrease in the expenses by object due to expiring ESAR dollars.
The community service fund, the ESAR dollars, that, we use those monies to do that back to school or that after-school program, correct?
Correct.
I mean, that's-
That was a big portion of-
That was a big portion, I mean, because we weren't really given a lot of money to be used in that, but we did use it for that.
Correct.
And students that did attend that program were able to at least attend free, and so helped out with the family members there, so-
Correct, yes, so for the 2024-25 school year, you know, now parents do have a fee to attend both before-school and after-school care, and CER has that up on their website again, that the applications are open for next year.
And that's just staying in the building? Do they stay right here in the elementary school?
Correct.
You mean, so really, it's handy for students not to get on a bus, cross town, or whatever, and-
Sure, yep. All right, page 13 just shows the debt service schedules of all the different bonds that the district has outstanding. Page 14 just goes over those federal relief funds, the total amount that we've received throughout all of, since 2020, and then we're projecting to have about 280, or projecting no balance at the end of June here. Okay, so on page 15 is the revised 2023-24 budget overview. So, we are projecting a surplus in all funds right now of $955,308. However, a majority of that is due to the restricted dollars for the Hunt Fund sale. So, if you see in funds 15 and 17, you know, that has an increase in fund balance of $1,265,025. But ultimately, our general fund, we are anticipating to break pretty close even with having a small surplus of $145. All right. And then page 16 is our preliminary budget for 2024-2025. If you look down at the total general fund, we are projecting a increase in our fund balance currently of $110,835, which, again, may fluctuate as we have more information coming in. We just got our property insurance renewal, which was less than favorable, so, as we move along in the year, we'll make some adjustments there and look towards revising that, towards the end of the year. But, otherwise, if we look at our food service fund, we do show a deficit there, or a decrease in fund balance of about $192,000. Again, that's planned. We do have too much in our fund balance right now, and so we have to have a plan to spend that down to get only three months of operating expenditures. The legislature did increase it to six, but that's only temporary, so, we'll continue to look at different projects. There's only so much you can do with equipment at once, so-
And there's limited as to what, what we can do, too.
Correct.
I mean, we, we discussed this at the meeting, and, you know, what else could we use it? And it was like, yes, we can use it for this, and no, you can't use it for that, so, it's not like we, you know, they adjusted the amount that we can have in our budget.
Correct.
But they didn't help us in helping, you know, give us more options to purchase things or to, you know, use the funds for.
Correct, yep, so that'll be an ongoing process, working forward of trying to spend down that fund balance. All right, community ed, we're looking at a, use the fund balance of about $115,000 there. Let's see here. Debt service, that's based on what the state lets us levy for, and so they will reduce down if we have too much in our fund balance, and so that's why they are, we're looking at a decrease in the debt service fund of about $22,000 there. We still do have enough to pay our obligations coming up, so. And then the Hunt Fund, we are looking at, since the sale of land, with the sale of land putting that away, we're looking at maybe about $50,000 potentially in investment income for the next year, and then as we develop the plan of what exactly those items will be spent on, again, that fund is completely restricted. So, all funds in total give us a decrease in fund balance of about $194,000. And then we're projecting that our unassigned fund balance at the end of the year in the general fund is 11.43%, which is pretty consistent with 11.51 projected starting off.
All right, if not, I entertain a motion to approve. The revised and preliminary budget is presented.
Make a motion to approve the 2023-2024 revised budget and the 2024-2005 preliminary budget.
Thank you. We have a motion by Julie and a second by Mari. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Moving on to old business, we have none, so new business, Minnesota State High School League membership. Dan?
Every year, we complete a form that resolves that Fairmont area schools will be a member of the Minnesota State High School League for their postseason activities in all athletics and fine arts, and all schools in the state do this every year. I would make a motion that we approve the resolution for membership as stated in appendix C of our packet.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Moving on to the amended school calendar.
The 2023-24 amended calendar is enclosed in appendix D. Each year, the district is required to amend its school calendar to reflect any changes in student staff days resulting from inclement weather or unplanned causes. The amended calendar includes two snow days and reflects a two-day reduction in student contact days. There is no change in the total number, number, number of contact days for staff. So, with that, I will make a motion to approve the amended 2023-24 school year calendar.
Thank you, Mari. We have a motion by Mari, second by Julie. Any discussion?
It's amazing, as, as nice as our winter was that we even still had, I know the one day we were at school board convention, but otherwise-
Which always happens.
Yeah, but amazing, though, that it was only two days, so.
Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries, thank you. We have policy revisions. Jen?
Our committee has approved the recommended changes, as shown in appendix E through H. I'll make a motion to approve the revisions to the following policies. Policy 406, public and private personal data. Policy 407, employee right to know exposure to hazardous substances. Policy 501, school weapons policy, and policy 515, protection and privacy of pupil records.
Thank you. We have a motion by Dan, Jen, second by Mari. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Payroll and benefit management agreement. Mike is not here. Dan, do you want to take that from the operations committee meeting? I can do it if you-
Yeah, you, you-
Okay. Our business manager, Jessica, is recommending that the district renew its agreement with Southern Plains Educational Co-op for the '24-'25 school year. There is no set fee for this agreement, rather, we bill the co-op for the number of hours our payroll offices dedicate to completing SPECs payroll each month. With that, I move to approve the 2024-25 payroll and benefit management agreement with Southern Plains Educational Cooperative.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by myself, a second by Julie. Any discussion or questions?
This is the same agreement, it's, it's kind of, we've done it every year that I've been on the board, and it's just, we work together with that, and yes, there's no set fee, but it's, it's just varies on the amount of time and that, so, very-
Yep, that's true, Jen. Thank you, Julie. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Food service management contract.
Now, Jessica's really getting her name here tonight in the lights. She is also recommending that our food contract with Chartwells be renewed for the 2024-2025 school year, which includes a 4.2% increase in the annual cost, and this is in appendix J for anybody that has questions on that, so I'll make that a motion to approve.
I'll second it. Thank you. We have a motion by Julie, second by Mari. Any discussion or comment?
Just one thing with that, this was, I believe, the last year, Jessica, that we can automatically renew this, and then we'll have to go through the full bid process?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other discussion or comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you, motion carries. We have the principal-master agreement for you in appendix K, or summary of it, in appendix K.
Yes, it is K.
Mike is not here, so I will, I can present that. The principals have settled their new contract for the 2023-24 and '24-'25 school year. Summary of the contract is enclosed in appendix K. I move to approve the principals' association agreement for those, for those two school years. Although, any discussion or second? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mari. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Okay, we are moving on to the co-PAC manager contract agreement. Jen?
Eric Walker and Sarah Goodall will now be serving as the co-PAC managers, starting in the '24-'25 school year. Hourly rate has been increased from 28 to 29 per hour. I'll make a motion to approve the co-PAC manager agreement for the '24-'26 school years as a rate of 29 per hour, and the co-PAC managers will be Sarah Goodall and Eric Walker.
I'll second it. Thank you. We have a motion by Jen, second by Mari. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. All right, we have the SPEC long-term facilities maintenance plan resolution, appendix L.
Yes, Southern Plains Education Cooperative has approved a long-term maintenance, facility maintenance program budget for its facilities, the amount of $215,000 for the coming year, of which Fairmont's percentage is 41.29% or $88,773. I move to approve the long-term facilities maintenance program in appendix L.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Dan, second by Jen. Any discussion? All right, because it's a resolution, I believe we need roll call vote. Jen? Aye. Dan?
Aye.
Chair votes, aye, Julie?
Aye.
Mari?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries.
I should have probably mentioned this before when you asked about comments, but this, this has come about because now with the Southern Plains owning the building in the prior years, prior to their purchase of the old Lincoln School building, they had leased building space, and so now, because we purchased, now we have got a plan in place to, just like we do in our own districts, what every other school district does in the state, but we have a plan to keep maintenance on schedule and to repair things as they come needed to be done.
And Julie, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is the second year now that we've done the LTFM for Southern Plains?
I believe so, yes. At first time, at the, before that, you know, while it's, basically got finished with the remodeling-
Right.
Basically, but yeah, we came with this as to, you know, that's in a way that the state will give us the ability to do that and that there'd be funds available to do the repairs, so, yes, and we're very fortunate to have the cooperative in our district, so, it is very helpful for them and our students.
Thank you, Julie. We are moving on to personnel. Julie, resignations?
Yes, sorry to have to do resignations, but with that, I would make a motion to approve or accept the resignation of the following instructors in our district. First one is Caitlin Winsauer, early childhood teacher effective June 5th, 2024. Caitlin was, this was her first year in the district. The second one is Amanda Brezina, seventh grade science teacher, that is effective also June 5th, 2024, and then the, and, let's see, this was her first year of our district, and then John McDonnell, eighth grade science teacher, that's effective also June 5th, 2024, and this is also John's first year in our district, so, with that, make a motion to accept those resignations.
Thank you. Do we have, we have a second? Motion by Julie, second by Mari. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you, motion carries. For employment, Mike's not here, so I can, I'll take this. Principal, Principals Bruski and Schmidt are recommending that Lisa Nelson be hired as a high school nurse. Principal Grensteiner is recommending that Allison Dahliger be hired as a third-grade elementary teacher. Principal Grensteiner is also recommending that Emily Lyle be hired as a long-term elementary substitute teacher, and that Dave Stortelen be hired also as a long-term elementary substitute teacher. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Okay, now we are moving on to, oh, I missed also, oh, did I get them all?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Board and committee report, oh, yeah, board and committee reports. Policy committee, Jen?
So, we met forever ago, it seems like May 21st, went over a lot of policies. We did talk with, about some of them already, they were in the appendices tonight that we approved, and then we also did table, or we're gonna continue to work on one of the policy, or two of the policies. That'll come back into the committee with our next meeting, which is-
Probably not till fall, because I think I saw an email that said we were gonna get the summer off.
Yes, awesome, so, in the fall.
Thank you, Jen. Operations committee, Dan?
Operations committee met on May 22nd. The first part of the meeting was a presentation from Mr. Pat Overham, representative from ICS, who shared methodology and timelines regarding comprehensive facility needs assessment for the district, and we were pleased with the presentation, and the committee gave the provisional approval to move forward with a comprehensive facilities needs assessment. Jessica gave us information regarding our agreement with SPEC for payroll services, about how that continues to work, the billing mechanism for Fairmont being the one who provides that for Southern Plains. Performing Arts Center lighting project, we looked at a couple of different bids, and we approved going forward with replacement of the lights and the control board in the Performing Arts Center, new LED lights that can do basically any color, and they're operated wirelessly, so, it's going to be a huge improvement. So it's going to be a huge improvement. And so hopefully, that's going to get done this summer here. We talked about the Hunt Farm investments, and we're going to still be following up on different methods in how to invest that money. Whitetail Ridge, the property that was formerly owned by the school district that we donated to the city of Fairmont, there is an agreement to get us the last of the money from those final lots as they are built upon. And then we had a discussion of the budget that we just passed.
Thank you. Any questions for Dan or anyone else on the operations committee? Okay. We have the school board work session on May twenty-eighth. And during that session, we went over the revised and preliminary budgets that Jessica presented this evening. We also looked at budget comparisons with our district and other districts in the state. There's a wonderful program that we are a part of where we can pull up any school in the entire state and look at what, what their budgets are and, and how they use the funds that they have available to them.
Interesting part of that was, too, also, like, even the referendum amounts that each district had. You know, people, you know, not knowing as board members, we don't keep track of everybody else's referendum amounts. But at that time, you know, we just knew that Martin County West had just been successful with their referendum. And so it was just interesting to see where we sat bearing, you know, just our general revenue, but then also with the extra referendum funds and stuff and the levies that we had available, too. So I thought that was very interesting.
Yeah, it is very interesting and very informative. We also looked at demographic projections for our district. And we went over the strategic plan, which we are trying to revisit with fidelity and make sure that as a district, we are holding ourselves to that plan in everything that we do. And I know that when we have planning meetings, whether it's with SDCC for staff development or with any group, that we, it is a conscious part of our decision-making to make sure that it aligns with that strategic plan. So I appreciate Superintendent Tradeout for making sure that we are reviewing that frequently and that as a board, we are informed about how that is being implemented in our district.
Well, it's, it's what it was supposed to be, fluid, in which we were always working on it. It's, it's always in, you know, in our minds and that. But then we're always, not necessarily as a board, but as a district, we are working on it, whether it's, you know, administration, whether it's staff, whatever. But, but it's just fluid. And so it can change all the time. But yes, it's easy to, to read, it's easy to keep it in, in our minds, so.
Yes. Any other comments or questions about our work session that we had? All right.
The treats were really good. Thanks, Judy.
Yeah. Judy provided many treats. Thank you. The SDCC Summer Retreat, Andy, will you speak to that?
Yeah. So last Thursday, we spent from approximately nine AM to two PM as District Staff Development Curriculum Council, which is representative largely by teachers, administration, support personnel, looking at our platforms for professional development moving forward. A lot of discussion had around organization of letters training associated with the REED Act, the impacted personnel there, as well as looking at other options for training in restorative practices in trauma-informed schools with our student support personnel, as they will not be directly engaged with the letters training. So that is, that was a bulk of it. We looked at budgets and how different things are going to be funded and coded, dollars that were going to be available moving forward into the subsequent school year. One thing that the state, came out of the state legislation that we looked at was how are we going to support our, the vast majority of our staff doing this literacy training associated with the REED Act. The state did redistribute some allocation of funds, so we will see a amount of increased revenue to support our teachers for time they have to spend outside of their day and any additional days in the summer months for that training. So there was more than that in that amount of time, but in that five hours, but that, those are some of the highlights.
Any questions for Superintendent Tradeout? All right. Have you entertained a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
You have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.